Okay, our. I have an unusual start for our council meeting. We're very grateful that Council President, County Council President Evan Glass is here to join us. Thank you very much, Evan, for being here. And we've set aside around forty-five minutes or so. To just make a few remarks. But also then have the. How do we handle the reverb? Okay. Make some remarks and after that open up for Q and A with residents. And then leave about ten minutes or so at the end for any further questions.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for joining us and joining me in a, in a nice conversation. Mayor Rush and I have been talking about me coming and sharing updates from the council with all of you for, for a little while now. And so I'm glad we were able to, to make this, this time work for everybody. I apologize for being a few minutes late. I was actually just coming from Temple Shalom on East West Highway. Where the school superintendent, Dr. McKnight, is having a forum to talk about the antisemitism. That is run rampant in our school system. That is ruining communities. That is scary to a lot of us. And unfortunately, it doesn't stop at antisemitism. We know the anti LGBTQ hate is on the rise. We know that racism against our black and brown neighbors is on the rise and want you to know that we are doing. That we are doing everything that we can here in Montgomery County to, to stem that. To control it. To make sure that we have public safety ready, to make sure that we have educational opportunities available. And a few weeks ago, I announced that we were going to be forming an anti-hate task force. And so I've been meeting with the county executive to get that up and running, recognizing that in our beautiful community of 1.1 million people. Home to four of the ten most diverse communities in the entire country, here in Montgomery County. Gaithersburg, Germantown, Rockville, and Silver Spring, four of the ten most diverse. We love our diversity and celebrate it, but need to protect it. And so I'm working with the county executive to make sure that this task force is made up. And represented by the beautiful diversity in our community, making sure that we have leaders from the Jewish community. Leaders in the LGBTQ plus community. Leaders in a number of other communities as well, and that will kick off in the next few weeks. And so there'll be more information about that. But our goal and our responsibility in local government is to make sure that people feel safe. And so we're working on that. I, I will, shifting gears a little bit, I will say that some of the most frequent communication I've had with, with the town and the residents of the town is about the leaf blower bill. I don't know if that brought some of you here, but I will share with you that the leaf blower ban that you all already have enacted, haven't you? So I believe the town and Somerset. I think the two local jurisdictions that have enacted a ban. Oh, the village, thank you. The town and the village. There we go. Thank you. Have, have enacted a ban and it was introduced to the council last year. The county executive wrote a bill, introduced it to the county. Last year, last June, it had a public hearing in September. And then it was never to be heard of again. It was never scheduled for Transportation and Environment Committee, and it was never scheduled for a full council work session. And that was in the last council. So when I came on board. After the election, when I became president of the council and chair of the Transportation and Environment Committee. I made sure we cleared the schedules to make sure that this got on the schedule as quickly as possible. So just last week. We had a Transportation and Environment Committee work session and it passed the committee three oh. Then on Tuesday. We had a full two-hour work session at the council to talk about it. And we are still talking about it. Colleagues of mine were not ready for a full vote. They wanted to provide more amendments and more time for amendments. And there were a number of amendments that were introduced. One passed unanimously. The other two failed on a six to five vote. It was contentious. And the reason that this is contentious. Is because we have to make sure we get it right, recognizing. The number, recognizing the individuals who are doing the landscaping work. Recognizing the companies that are doing that work. Largely immigrant, largely black and brown neighbors of ours. And if we want them to convert from gas-powered leaf blowers to electric, we need to provide a financial incentive. And a lot of conversation went around, how much is that incentive? How do we provide that incentive? And the county executive's bill said that he would provide $300,000 as an incentive. Over three years, which was only $100,000. And if we want people to make this transition as quickly as possible. We need to bring that funding in as close to the inaction, enactment date as possible and not string it out over three years. So this was the minutia that we were talking about. I've continued to support it. Recognizing how important this financial structure is and. It will probably come back up to the council in, in a week, two or three, whenever we're able to do it before the budget. But I also just want to share with you another detail as well, that because there was so much interest by the council in making sure that this reimbursement system. Is correct. It will have a regulation attached to it. And the county executive will have to send the regulation back to the county council. For us to review how financial reimbursements will be made. So even if we pass this in two or three weeks, it will still take. Probably more than a year or a year and a half for it to be enacted. And that's largely because of the regulation. Council members want to make sure that whatever the regulation is for the financial incentive, they want to make sure it's right. And that there's enough time and enough information and communication with the public and with the landscapers. And so that is likely what will hold up a speedy enactment. But we'll have more information in the next few weeks after it is brought up. Back to the full council. A few other items I just want to share and then we can open it up for conversation. Last week, I introduced a new piece of legislation, the Safe Streets Act. Recognizing that the reason so many of us live in our communities and why you all live here in the town. So that you can walk to coffee shops, walk to restaurants right across the street in Bethesda. Unfortunately, our streets are not safe. For pedestrians and bicyclists. And dare I say, not safe for drivers as well. And so what the Safe Street Act does is make sure that our roads are safer for everybody. And there's four points to the plan. The first is we're going to ban right turn on red in our downtown area. And the reason for that is because last year there were 541 pedestrians and bicyclists hit in Montgomery County. And nineteen people were tragically killed. Nearly two-thirds of the people who are hit are hit in intersections. They are the most dangerous place on our roads. And here in Montgomery County, we have not adopted what so many other jurisdictions have adopted, and that is a universal no-turn-on-red. Particularly in our downtown areas, which is downtown Bethesda. Which is downtown Bethesda. There. Richard, I think you need to mute. There we go. Maybe not. Okay. Good to see you, Richard. So, so it's downtown Bethesda, downtown Silver Spring, Wheaton, Rockville, our urban cores. You know, there's 500 square miles in Montgomery County and not all areas are the same. But the downtown walkable places, the places we want to encourage bicycling as well, those will be where the no-turn-on-red is. Another. Aspect of the bill is providing longer time for people to walk across the street before the light turns. Right now, it is three seconds for a head start for pedestrian, pedestrians to cross. We're going to give a seven-second head start so that when pedestrians get the walk signal. They will have greater access in that intersection. It's called leading intervals, leading pedestrian intervals. And it is the best way to make sure that pedestrians, when they're in the crosswalk, are safe as well. So we're going to increase the, the head start that pedestrians have. Another thing that we're going to do, we're going to do, require the county executives to do two analyses. One is an analysis on automated traffic enforcement. Recognizing that cameras are colorblind. And we don't have the enforcement mechanisms, physical enforcement mechanisms, to catch people, to slow them down. To see when they're running red lights. And it is proven that cameras stop people from bad action. And there's nothing to fear if you're driving within the, the rules of the road. And so the county executive will be required to provide a new automated enforcement plan. And then the last part is recognizing that our kids need to be safe when they're walking to school. I don't know about you, but my heart drops every time I get a text saying that a kid was hit while waiting for the bus. Walking to elementary school. Standing at a bus stop, and these are all things that have happened in the last few months. And we have to make sure that our kids are able to get to school safely. And whenever we see or witness an incident where a child is hurt. We have to make sure that it's not replicated again. And so this. Fourth aspect of this bill is going to require. The Department of Transportation to do an analysis. Of our schools and of the particular place a child was hit. Recognizing that we have county roads and we have state roads. But I think we all can agree that children should be safe when they're going to and from school. And anytime there's an incident, it has to be investigated and we have to see what kind of physical changes, engineering changes. Or any other type of infrastructure realignment needs to be done to make that child and to make all of their classmates safe at that school. Last thing, I'll just add two more things real quick. Few months ago, I introduced an economic development plan. Recognizing that we need to continue having more jobs come to Montgomery County. It is the sole reason why, when I was elected president of the county council, one of the very first acts I did. Was to create a brand-new committee, and that is the Economic Development Committee. These, for those of you who have been engaged in elections here in the county, we all talk about jobs, we all talk about economic development, we might talk about it in different ways. But at the county council, we didn't have enough time to talk about it. We had one committee called the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee. And the Fed Committee, as it was known, spent a lot of time on zoning. And on housing, which are important things, things I know you all know a whole lot about. But it didn't leave a whole lot on the agenda for economic development. And so I wanted to make sure we created space for thorough conversation. And after I created that committee. There was so much interest in it, it became the largest committee on the council with four members. And I was so interested, I put myself on the committee as well. So I have a plan that's online. I think David has some copies of people are interested on economic development. And we're going to be working through that over the next few months and years, quite frankly. And then lastly. I'll lay maybe purple line for questions I'm sure people will ask, but next week, March fifteenth is budget day. The county executive is going to release his budget. The current budget is $6.3 billion. I expect that to grow. By a bunch. We'll find out what the county executive puts in that budget, but I know that we're all feeling constrained. The school system has asked for, I think, 300 million above the current budget. Our workforce is asking for salary increases, just like American workers across the country. Costs for other things have gone up. And so I expect this will be a tough budget to try and reconcile. But that budget will come out on March fifteenth. The council will then have budget hearings at the beginning of April. And then we will do our six-week sprints as a council to go through that budget. And see if there are any changes that need to be made. And so I look forward to, to your engagement on that. And so, so I'll stop. There are other things I can talk about, but I, I want to listen to you. And so Mayor Rush, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
My first question is, we've come to see, Council President Glass, in person, to give you the advisory draft. And we're going to, we're going to, to, to. Hold on, somebody on time. Do you put it together? I, I guess you need to, because.
Or, or President Glass can issue the question.
You want me, I can repeat the question? Okay.
Would you have a statement?
I have to comment a question. The first comment has to do with the State Streets. And it's about Paul and Baywell, that you can walk, walk anywhere, blind pedestrian, I'm well aware of the many how to intersect. My concern was, and I hope you pass it, I would probably do it in some way. That most of the streets in our Germantown area are state highways. May have been incredibly hostile and not allowed to take it to the signal relation. They have reduced, put in, need fat signals, we allow pedestrians to go safely. They just said, but the obstacles.
Yeah.
As a member of the pedestrian implementation advisory committee. We have asked, we asked the county to be thoughtful, putting, not to take the blocks, some of those streets. And we're told that the budget is going, we couldn't afford to pay the other levations, unless, which makes sense. So I hope that there's some way to work with the state to be a little more.
You want me to answer that or repeat that? Sure, sure, sure. So, so. I, I appreciate your support for, for the Safe Streets legislation and the, the acknowledgement that. So many of the major roads in our community and across the county are state highways. And so the county and our Department of Transportation has no oversight. And no authority, unilateral authority over those roads. And you're correct on that. But. We can't let that stop us from making our residents safe. And what has happened over the last decade, decade and a half, is that State Highway Administration. Run by Maryland, the state has seen what we're doing, has heard from advocates, has heard from elected leaders. And they have started making changes, not only here in Montgomery County, but statewide, recognizing that downtown Bethesda might have a state highway. But that state highway is far different than the state highway in Hagerstown. That might run through Hagerstown downtown area. And so they have already started to adopt and adapt. Different rules and regulations. And what I'm hoping for. Is that the adoption of this law will. Force some of our state delegates in District Eighteen, District Sixteen, and some other jurisdictions to pass similar measures in Annapolis. And say, Montgomery County is already doing this. We need you to be genuine partners. We need you to care for our residents, our pedestrians, our bicyclists as much as we do. So I hope this pulls and cajoles them into the right direction. But, but as of right now, you are correct that there are different roles for different roads, but we can't stop there.
My second, my second question, they both have to do with zoning text amendment that we introduced several years ago, initially by the plan, though. And worked on by the planning staff. To allow multiple family causing single family people, please. And my comment is that during that process, a couple of years ago, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. A lot of the dialogue that went on was not very pleasant. Anyone who raised objections or questioned some of the provisions that were suggested for that. Zoning test is a little bit of a racist and unwelcoming and excluding. And I would hope that when this topic comes out, for discussion. That the council will advise the planning staff and the planning board very strongly. That the dialogue going forward needs to be pleasant and welcoming to all views. That's my comment on that. And I trusted it.
So the, the question was about a zoning text amendment related to single-family zoning and the potential changing of single-family zoning. And the discussion. Around it, sometimes unpleasant discussion from your perspective. And so two parts to that. First. I don't know when or if that zoning text amendment will come back. You know, we have rules at the council that things are introduced, and if they don't, if they are not passed over a certain time period, they naturally expire. And given that that was introduced years ago. And it has not been back before the committee or the full council, I'm not sure that it will. And we'll, we'll see if Councilmember Juwondo or anybody else wants to revive it. But I think the more important point that you raise is about having civil discussion. And disagreeing without being disagreeable, which isn't always the way things are done here. And I want to make sure we change that. And one of the ways we are changing that is by appointing a new planning board. And just last week, last Tuesday, we appointed three new members to the planning board. This after we requested the resignation of all five planning board members last November. You know, I'm a former journalist. And I always appreciate Montgomery County being in the news. But it was the first time in recent memory that our planning department made a one-page, front page of the Washington Post. Which was not necessarily a good thing. But the council took action. And we recognize that there was acrimony at the planning board. And you witnessed some of that and someone who's engaged in the process. And so we just appointed three new members of the planning board, and the three people that I voted for, who got appointed. Are all going to bring a different tone. They committed that to me, they committed that to my colleagues. And on Monday, we will be sending out a press release. Seeking applications for the two other members of the planning board, one of whom will be the chair. And so if anyone wants to serve on the planning board as a regular member or as the chair, you'll see that notice on Monday. But. With the three new members and the two who will come on board. Having respectful dialogue, disagreeing without being disagreeable. And doing what's in the best interest of our county residents is what I'm looking for. And so I think it'll be a different tone in the planning board. Yeah.
We ought to move on, we have other people. Some other questions this audience? Howard, thank you, Mayor Rush. Thank you, Mr. Glass, for coming. One quick add-on to her question about the state highway. There's a good position on the old Connecticut Avenue. Restructuring, potentially going down in two lanes and the tax on that. And then the other question is, I'd love for you to talk a little bit about. The, the schools and the safety schools, safety in schools, if there's a lot of, whether it's weapons or drugs or law and issue for that, so.
It's not this. Thank, thank you, Howard. So the, so the question was about, two questions. One was about Connecticut Avenue, and can you be more specific? I'm not sure I'm, I'm familiar.
They're looking at reducing the two lanes from three lanes, especially in this part. It's similar to what Washington DC proposed downtown, whatever you think. Three lanes, they're looking at that, the decent border. I'm not sure what, but certainly in the case of like.
So I, I haven't been briefed on that. As the chair of the Transportation Committee, I know who I'm contacting tomorrow to, to, to see where that is. But I know what they're doing across Western Avenue, but I haven't heard that that was coming here. Is that something that the, the town or even the village are advocating for?
They had, they should come out and plan to do that. Between three and two, thirty bucks, and then you decide, and determine laying the bill.
Got it. Okay.
Still, for the free flow of traffic, it would be just two lanes.
So it's an extension of the, the bike lanes that they're, got it. Thank you. I, I was unaware that they were doing that study, but I'll, I'll look into it and we'll, we'll have a conversation. And then school safety, that's part of the conversation that I just came from. You know, our kids are, are having a tough time. They were having a tough time during the pandemic when they were all at home. And they didn't have any outlets and they couldn't see their friends and they were. Following their classes and doing assignments on Zoom. And the mental duress that so many of them were under then, unfortunately. Was. Was ignored. It was ignored by. The county. It was ignored largely by society, and this is not something that is unique to Montgomery County. And so here we have young people. Who have had childhoods unlike anything we've ever had. And now they're back in the classrooms. And they have social media to contend with. And they are lashing out. And some of them are lashing out violently. Some are lashing out through medication. And others are doing other things. And what we have to do is provide the resources for these kids. And I suspect that will be part of the budgetary process as well. How we do not have enough social workers. Enough nurses, enough mental health providers. And, and I'll go back, I think, you know, if I'm going to read into your question a little bit more, when there was the great debate three years ago about school resource officers and police officers in our classrooms, in our schools. I told people at the time. That we could not create a vacuum. That I would be supportive of removing police from, from certain schools. But we couldn't create a vacuum and we had to make sure that we had social workers and mental health providers in there for them. That never happened. And it was a missed opportunity. And I think. People got ahead of themselves. And our kids are suffering for it. And so there's a lot of course correction that needs to be done. And I'm just speaking honestly with all of you. Because these are our kids and we have to be honest about their well-being. And so there's a lot more work that needs to be done. Our school system is doing everything that they can. They've modified the arrangement with the Montgomery County Police Department. So that the police do come into schools. For certain types of calls. But when we have at BCC two kids found drunk in the bathroom. That's a whole nother level of trauma. And there's no police in our schools that can solve that. There's no. There's a lot missing there. And so it's a societal problem that we have to figure out how to deal with. And for me, that is mental health support, that's nurses, that's other supports for our kids. And I'm going to be making sure that as I look at the budget that comes out, that there's enough support for our kids. So Howard, thank you for the question.
The other question, Chris? Uh, President Glass, thanks for coming back. I live in the G blocks, uh, I don't know, I live in this town for, for the happy years. I'm living in Kansas City, Kansas City. More years, I'm here, so you are. We're going to be able to watch the work, the roads we tour, and what, we may not, but we don't, we're probably in, in, uh, in, uh, in. And I would rather than every. But as long as those to the street, and I, so. So I actually deserve this experience, on that can say the, I think, you're angle, I'm gonna do that, you know, turn on that. And the leading district in the new year, I didn't know it started that, totally not fair that. Those together allows to begin to then. The second concern is those crime. So within five blocks of my house, you know, car jacking, three blocks, we had. Both staying all up in a salon, trying to dump things for iPhones. We had a CBF car jacking, which was. There's often, and I walked, apparently, but I walked, I walked in there last night. And my daughter, I'm not used to that. But, uh, as an example, I know I had problems taking the, 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 bringing, putting up, which in the race, the signing bombs, the twenty grand, which is really, yes, fantastic. But TC is entirely dependent upon the availability there to call up for city panels or private business. And last year, I think it comes to pass, they'll. Provide rebates to private sector, putting in campus. And when we check on everything, three years ago, the program, the administration hasn't done any more. So maybe you could nudge, uh. Mark team to make progress with your parents, because you didn't bring anything out when we just saw it, okay? And you are, as a resident, willing to allow the police to work with your videos, it's all, you know, the whole thing. Being your parents, it's not a street, it's a, a sideline. The, the last sale says that if they're able to deal with the budget, they're going to release. There would be ways that the administration could revisit the weapon that's spoken in the state, and you know, the county, the tax, that, that property. These need bid a month ago, CFO adjusted, it's gotten before passed by 470 million dollars down. Largely because of the office building vacancies, the office building going dark, and recently going dark, but safety is happening here. So if you look at the trust we're spending in the coming weeks.
Particularly with schools. And as we're trying to do bus rapid transit and a number of other initiatives too. Um, and a North Bethesda, another metro entrance in North Bethesda, which I know Chris cares about too. Um, but I will continue supporting the reinstatement of those funds. Um, and that's part of the capital budget. And then just broadly, just about the purple line. Uh, we are having a hearing on the purple line, uh, I think in two weeks' time. David, do you know the date? It's the Monday, so not next Monday, but the Monday thereafter. Um, and it is part of the semi-annual meeting that we have at the Purple Line, and I've been on Transportation Committee. Throughout my first term, and I always got the first question at the Purple Line hearing. And I looked at the CEO and said, welcome. And my first question is, are we on schedule and on budget? And you should watch them squirm because they couldn't answer the most straightforward question ever. And that was my first time. And then six months later, when they came back, that's what happened. There was a new CEO. And I asked him, hello, Mr. VanderWort. Nice to meet you. Are we on schedule and on time? And he too squirmed. Um, and then it was a few months after that, that the news broke that the Purple Line was woefully over budget, behind schedule, and then ceased construction for almost two years. And so whatever we think of the Purple Line, we have invested in it. Our roads are scarred because of it. We have to get it done. We have to get it done, and I'm going to continue doing everything I can in my capacity on the council to get this done as quickly as possible without impacting any more people. Because we've made too much of a commitment. Um, and so that hearing will be, uh, a week from Monday, and I'm sure some of you will be watching.
Um, one more question. You thought you thought mine environment, Chris, or what?
No, so there's there's so many of all buildings built. I haven't been a fan, especially the ones in the district.
Uh, so I don't know the occupancy rate of all of the buildings, but what I do know is that we're in a housing crisis. And we don't have enough housing for people who want to. And that's not only Montgomery County, but that's the DC region. And not only are we in a housing crisis for people who want it, but we don't have enough affordable housing as well. And my philosophy is that if we want more housing that is affordable, we need more housing. And the deal I think we as a community need to come to grips with is that if we, we can do one of two things. We can build housing on farmland, on forests, which tends to be up in Germantown, in Clarksburg, and in Frederick. What happens there is people move to those areas. We lose the farms, we lose the forests, and all those people come on 270 because they want to work in Montgomery County, or they want to work in the District of Columbia, and then they're complaining about 270 being crowded. A legitimate concern. So then what do we do? We're having a great debate about widening 270 and about widening 495. But it is because of some of these policies that we have this debate. I I don't prefer that option. The option that I prefer is having walkable communities where people choose to drive less, if at all, where they walk to their stores, they walk to their jobs if they can. They take metro, they take the bus, and in order to accommodate that, we need a little more density in the areas. But I think that's what we just as a community, as we're maturing, and as we have fewer places to build, that's the conversation that we need to have. Would we prefer building near metro, building where there was already high buildings, maybe building a little bit higher? Or do we prefer deforestation? Do we prefer building on agricultural land? And suffering the consequences of people who say they can't drive down 270. That really is the debate I think we're grappling with right now. And so as you think about it, I just ask you to consider those different options. Because last day, I'll just end on this note, Montgomery County has 1.1 million people. One third of our residents are from other places. They were not born in the United States. And I prefer not to build walls around Montgomery County. I want everyone to continue living here. And we have to figure out how we can accommodate that.
I just want to one more question.
Yes.
First one, did I already mention that financial incentives are being considered for businesses? Are financial incentives considered for individual homeowners? If not, why? And also, mother and grandfather.
Can I answer that one first?
Sure.
Okay, so the questions about leaf blowers and about the financial rebates that are being offered. You're getting to the heart of the debate. Trying to figure out how much money needs to be provided to some of our smaller minority businesses and/or also our residents. And the county executive's bill did not contain any parameters. When we asked about it, the Department of Environmental Protection did not know. Um, there was somewhere that they said $100 rebate. And in the eyes of many of my colleagues, $100 rebate is insufficient. When some of these, uh, equipment, some of this equipment costs more than $1,000. And so what the county executive will do as the law is currently drafted, they will have to send over a regulation that defines their rebate program. And the council will debate it and have to approve it. And so that's part of why this is not going to happen anytime soon. But it is specifically about the rebate, how much we can give, and if we have the budget to even provide those incentives.
Just quickly, are there any other projects which you or the council have considered banning? Yes, Juan Lawrence. Uh, during whole vehicles.
Not, not to my knowledge, the, uh, question was, are there any other things that we're planning on banning or prohibiting? And I'm not aware of others. But the council has banned plastic use where it's no longer free. You have to pay five cents for it, and that's been around for more than a decade. We've banned pesticides because they are, uh, unhealthy, not only for our environment, but for our residents as well. Um, we've banned styrofoam. And now the state has banned styrofoam. So I think we're selective in what we choose to prohibit. And it's based on good reason, good science. Um, but there's nothing else. If you have other suggestions, I'm not hearing that you have other suggestions, but if anyone has anything else, let me know.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And, uh, thank you, President Glass. And by the way, I should make it a, um, Councilmember Glass, as you often see this, and he was number one vote there uh, in the last council election, he was an admiral member, and it's all us, and we're really happy. And on leaf blowers, we, your echoes, I hear echoes at least of what we've had from here for a couple of years, and they've not done so. Um, it's proud, kudos to you. And we have a lot of minutes and experiences to share, and no fun to make, David, the question was the critical part of the question. We got through it, and that was a massive public conversation. Uh, it was a couple of experiences by a major publication, they've never had all this in town, we go around with it. Hands on, so the ideas, the lessons, to get involved, then engage the, um, contract to seek the rebates as far as execution. Um, real quick, also with Mayor mention, I think Mayor, who everybody, uh, has a care. Uh, we've been engaged, and we're gonna, uh, hopefully, United Pass new, uh, language to reach out to all of every municipality, municipality, on the education program, education awareness, building on the good actors of the, uh, council passing the definition on education last year. Uh, and now, of course, really, you should convert the NSA taskbooks and get all that sort of engagement, working with the other partner municipalities really leaning on this issue right now. And so hopefully that will pick up tomorrow, the communities will begin to rapid next month or the month after.
I mean, thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Rubin. I'll just close by saying we're all on the same team. And I appreciate the work that you all do. And our state delegation does, and the council, and our federal delegation as well. Um, and there are certain powers that each of us have. Whether it is, again, is, is public, uh, you know, pedestrian safety in our roads um, or the use of, of toxic chemicals. Um, and clearly something as pervasive as anti-Semitism, uh, which is becoming a national and, dare I say, even global problem. Uh, but thankfully, we have leaders here in the town. We have JCRC and ADL and AJC, um, nationally known organizations, internationally known organizations with their leaders here in Montgomery County. Um, and I know that if we put all of our minds together, we're, we're gonna bend the curve. It's not always easy. It's not always on the timeline that we would like. That's democracy. Um, but also those are the challenges that we have to stand up against. And as long as we do it together, I know we will be better for it, and all of our residents will be better. So, so I will say thank you for this evening's conversation. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Um, David Lorenzo on my team, who staffs me on the Transportation and Environment Committee. If anybody has any questions about leaf blowers or transportation issues, pedestrian safety issues, uh, David's our guy. And, um, let's stay in touch, okay? Thank you, everybody. Thank you. That's back there. We'll have to make do.
Okay. That was a very, very engaging, very, very good presentation. I think we all appreciate a lot what the council, County Council does and what Council, uh, President himself accomplishes. Yeah, I guess. I want to make sure, can people on the screen hear us?
We can.
You can? Okay, good. Um, so with that, we've already called a meeting to order. And would like to proceed to the, um, uh, to the, uh, February twenty 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 three financial report. Can you turn on your mic there? Yes, we only have one computer on it.
Okay, can, can folks hear me on the?
Yeah, I, I think we're beginning to hear you off the, uh, off of your mics.
Okay. I think that volume needs to be put down.
I'm laughing. Barney.
So can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna just proceed here. I've been, I've been here's feedback. This whole year at this point, and received about eighty-six percent of our budget operating revenue. Uh, spent about fifty-four percent of our budgeted operating expenditures. Um, we spent about thirty-one thousand of our capital budget on street and sidewalk work and street signage and some new trees. Um, the operating revenue figure that I, I mentioned just before, about eighty-six percent of it's come in versus the budget, reflects that there's $700,000 that was taken from the ARCA grant. Um, a $674,000 that we received during the February distribution. Um, all of that is taken into account. One of the nice surprises this year is that, given interest rates have gone up, we've actually had a very, very healthy return in terms of our interest income. Um, for example, while our expected revenue from interest this year is supposed to be 10,000, we've thus far received $154,000. Um, and it's yet not the end of the school year. So a word about, uh, interest income as a whole. So a question had come up of whether or not there's an option for, uh, the town to consider investing in short-term CDs. And we took a look at the, actually, the, the, the town staff, specifically, uh, Todd and, um, John took a look at uh, our investment policy as it exists right now, and realized along the way that it hasn't actually been updated since 2014, even though the state has updated rules accordingly with respect to, um, uh, our, uh, options for investments. And, uh, while that's working through our, our, our legal, um, folks in terms of making it align with our policy aligned with the state changes, it's also going to make it a little bit easier for the town in the future to do some investment, um, alternate investments such as short-term CDs. That will all be discussed in a future town council meeting. Um, in the meantime, though, we basically did an analysis to understand, um, you know, not only what our options are, but in figuring out, given that interest rates looks like from yesterday's announcements are going to continue, uh, we're just going to stick with where it all is right now, don't ruin a good thing, um, and just update the policy accordingly. Uh, so between the hundred and fifty-four thousand in interest income that we received thus far and an almost, um, the 500,000 that we received in an earlier distribution, which was, uh, sorry, in February, which was 350,000 more than we expected, plus the almost 147,000 that we have not needed to spend on snow removal so far, yields us a surplus this year of $651,000. So we're in excellent shape for this year, and that's all I've got.
Uh, nothing to add. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We, we can hear you, Todd.
Uh, we can't hear you.
We can hear you.
Yeah. Can you hear us?
The Town Hall and Joel, you're muted.
Let me try one thing. I assume you're asking me to give my manager's report, so I will proceed to do that. I'll briefly, uh, review staff activities over the past month. In addition to assisting with, uh, several major projects, including the Corso rezoning and redevelopment, as well as the Farm Women's Market Parks Development Project, which is now being, uh, renamed the Bethesda Market Park, uh, project. Both of those will be discussed tonight. Staff also continued to manage town park and stream improvement projects. We'll be discussing Zimmerman Park redevelopment this evening, as well as Coquelin Run stabilization. We've also communicated with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation regarding the storm drain cleaning and inlet installation. Mc, Montgomery County has completed their storm drain cleaning and cleanout and repairs of our storm drain uh, inventory that we did, uh, around six months ago. And the design is done for the storm drain inlets that will be, uh, installed on Ford Apple at Oak Ridge and Maple. Uh, we're waiting for that to be scheduled, uh, with the contractor. Staff also prepared the draft FY24 budget and distributed to the council for, or in anticipation of the work session the council will be holding on March 22nd to discuss the, uh, draft 24 budget. As Irene mentioned, we also discussed the investment of town funds and amendments to the town investment policy. Staff attended a county emergency operations management meeting, as well as a Montgomery County Department of Transportation meeting on the district's bicycle lane project in Connecticut Avenue and how it impacts communities, uh, across the line in Maryland. We met with Len Echo representatives to discuss crime and off-duty policing. And we also prepared for the installation of two new LED stop signs on westbound Stanford at East Avenue and on eastbound Leland Street at East Avenue. Uh, the first LED sign at Stanford should be installed this week. And, uh, the assembly of the second sign will be towards the end of next week. Uh, we should have that both deployed, um, uh, very shortly. Uh, staff also continued to plan for the second phase of town office improvements, and we hopefully well-assisted the Community Relations Committee and other committees in planning special events and other projects that they're working on. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, Todd, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Um, good report, and thank you, but I personally have a conflict on the 22nd, uh, so we'll have to change that date for the work session. Just have to work on.
Okay.
Sorry about that. That hadn't been, somehow we miscommunicated on that, but that's the date that I cannot actually have a work session. We'll find another date.
All right.
No big deal. Okay, thank you. Um, all right, let me now offer, uh, ask for public comments. Is there anybody with, to speak to the council this time about any subject on their minds? If not, we will assume that you're happy. You have to realize that. That's the consequence of not speaking.
Okay. Barney, we have Beverly Hudnut who'd like to speak.
Yeah, please.
Beverly, who is very happy generally, so don't take me wrong here. Um, and I don't know that this is the time and place to say these things, but since we're doing the budget stuff, I just have to say that I continue, I love living in this community. I mean, it, it is just so important to me to maintain the friendships and, and all the relationships and everything. It's, it's, it's a wonderful place to live. But I continue to be so distressed about the number of people who do not clean up after their dogs, not only in the pu- so-called public right-of-way, the sidewalks, private property and, and, and stuff. Um, Barney, in the, that alley between your house and, and our new neighbor's home, it's like somebody like dropped a glass, some purple glass blue thing today, and like, didn't clean it up. It's like people are just like not being, um, terribly neighborly friendly. And, and I'm mentioning this in the context of the budget, and it's like, I am not a fan personally of the, um, flashing lights on the stop signs because for people like me, it can cause seizures. Um, and I don't have the window coverings to like, deal with that with the four stop signs on my corner where I live. But I continue to be just like totally perplexed every day when I'm working in my garden room when I see the number of neighbors, vendors, school buses, running the four stop signs outside my house. And, um, I would like for us to consider, from a budget perspective, doing whatever it takes to be able to put cameras in certain locations. We can make a fortune on my intersection alone with the number of, of people who are blowing through stop signs. Um, so I just thought I would throw that out there, just to be a participative citizen.
There are limitations on our ability to put cameras, and that's a whole nother conversation that we should have with you. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments? Yes, please, Sheila. Doesn't that?
Any impact perhaps on the visiting staff, the county staff? Um, or is it matter related to, uh,
So Todd, I know has put together a staffing plan. Um, and, and part of it is taking a look at, not, not so much taking a look, but putting in place appropriate staff members. So there has been additional staff this year, but as you may know, we lost our constituent services aid. Um, and although there's a lot of recruitment taking place, um, you know, people that are interested, uh, make sure they're putting in their, their, uh, applications, but, uh, right now that is the one position that's open, but between the use of, of consultants and attorneys as, as various, uh, projects allow, um, as well as we have our, you know, great staff with, with Dave here as well. Um, I, I understand that there, there's, if, if the opportunity arose to be able to hire additional people, there would be absolutely budget for it, so.
I don't see any other hands.
For comments anyone wishes to make about budget priorities that the council should be aware of, please raise your hand and let us know. All right, I will, we will assume that you will see the budget, which will obviously show different numbers, but reflect much, many of the same programs that town has traditionally had and, and will continue to have. Um, with that, we can now move to the variance hearing. Uh, first, uh, the, uh, Sindel, uh, requested variance. Um, and are they here?
I'm here.
Okay, very good. All right, good. Thank you for being here in person. Um, and the way we handle these variances, um, is firstly, ask our town attorney, Ron Bolt, who is on the screen. Ron, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good, good. Um, to basically first describe the process, uh, which we go through. Uh, and then we'll follow that process and listen carefully to discussion and make our decision tonight. So Ron, please, when you outline the process that we'll be going through.
Sure. The case will begin with a presentation by the applicant. And the applicant should please note that the town council has had the opportunity to review your application in advance of tonight's hearing. So you don't need to cover everything that's in your application, but please feel free to address what you'd like. After that, the council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. Following that, we'll have a period for public comments or questions to the applicant. And then after that, the applicant will have the opportunity for a brief rebuttal. The record will then close, and the council will deliberate and then entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision, either approving or denying the request. If the request is approved, please note that the decision's not final until it's written. And that's a process that takes about a week to 10 days. You wouldn't be able to get your, your building permit until that occurred. And since we are dealing with some difficulty tonight, if anyone's there in person and wants to speak, would it be all right, Mr. Mayor, if they went to the podium and perhaps use uh, Joel's laptop or someone's phone so we could make sure that their testimony is captured for the recording? So we're, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, but the question is for you to be able to hear what the, everyone else is saying, Ron, it's necessary for anyone in the room to speak into a computer. Though you can't.
We just lost you, Barney.
I'm toggling back and forth.
Sure, why don't you let, uh? So if you go to the podium, you'll be speaking through the computer.
And those speaking at the podium, if you could please identify yourself by name and address for the recording, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
I can't hear what you said, what did you say?
Identify yourself by name and address.
Uh, Mike Sindel, forty-three twelve Stamford Street. Overall, thirty thousand footer overview, since you guys have gone through the details, is that my wife and I are looking to do a side addition, which would grant us just an enlarged kitchen and, uh, adding a couple bedrooms upstairs for our ever-growing family. We've had another kid in October, and we're just looking to just provide space for everyone in the family. And as you guys know, too, the pandemic has, uh, changed everyone's lifestyle a little bit. People are now starting to work more at home. And so my wife and I are also looking to get away a little bit from the chaos so we can have our private Zoom calls and stuff.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to make sure there's confirmation that that bingo tree, that holy tree will not be impacted by the I just wanna make sure there's confirmation that that think-go tree that will not be impacted by this project.
Yes, we're not planning to do anything on the uh the other side of the house, everything will continue to be as it is uh today, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues? Any question, I'm asking anybody, uh any other residents? Okay, it comes back to us, Ron?
Yes.
Um any comments from my colleagues? Rich, is anything from, Rich, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'll just comment, I think what was really overpowering kind of very uh compelling from the application. Was the very odd shape of your lot and I just want to say that uh this is exactly what the variance process is for, it's not possible to capture. Uh in a town especially as old as ours, with so many different lot shapes, no, there's no way that we could set up. Any red set of regulations on building ordinances that could actually be fine tuned to every every lot there is. And your lot with this very particular shape, I think. It's exactly kind of a poster child for the circumstance and the variance process is legitimate and we can understand very clearly. You know, the needs that you have that can't be complied with otherwise because of the shape of the lot, so that's my own personal comment. Um if there's no other question, you take them out? Yeah, sure, someone who might have to make a motion.
Motion to approve the variance as stated.
A second? Do I? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy your audition. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, we'll now move on to the handler. Puff, you're here, great, thank you. And you already heard the process, we don't have to repeat that from scratch.
Um Elizabeth Kim, thirty-nine eleven Virgilia Street. So um as you're aware, we are just trying to solve a water problem and um underneath of our side deck. Understand that if simply were to re-roof our flat roof, it would only be warranted for three years. Um by building and extending that existing wall upwards and enclosing the deck, we hope to permanently solve. Water leaking into our basement.
Very good. Any questions from anybody? Any questions from the audience? Rich, do you have anything you want to question?
No, no.
I don't see any, so it comes back to the council. Do we have any views that we wish to express? We're okay? Alright. Is there a motion to support?
Go for it, Irene.
Motion to to approve the variance is stated.
Oh, a second? Joy again, okay. They don't always go so quick. They're always their slam dunks, uh but but in this case, as the other, it was very evident of the certain circumstance warranted the the variance, so. Enjoy your new edition. Alright, I'd like to take a short break and then reconvene for our council discussions, if there are a number of things to go over, let's take a couple minutes. Alright, you can hear us? Good, we'll reconvene uh and now go to our council discussions. Uh and with permission of my of my colleagues, and I've mentioned this uh before, but there are a few additional items I'd like to work into the agenda with your permission. The uh when we get to uh discussion of of Zimmerman, I'd like to add, so that's connected. Uh uh Zimmerman and Coke Run Improvements to also add the discussions that. Irene has had with various residents in Elm Street Park about the drying up of Coke Run and the actions we'll be taking. Uh and um also um. The uh the meeting that will follow up regarding the crosswalk at East West Highway, we have some further word about that, so those are two topics. And then um at the end, after we talked about the anti-Semitism, I'd like to add a topic on the traffic flow on forty-sixth street. So with your permission, uh we add those three topics to our discussion list tonight. Uh the um to start off with with Corso. Um we've we have our testimony and and Todd realized we ought to send out a town prior with our testimony. We can do that tomorrow?
We can.
Uh Joel will be giving it tomorrow at at the planning board hearing, because I'm I have a personal commitment with my wife Marjorie, I'm going to be able to attend. But thank you, Joel, for doing that. Uh and uh trust will go well. Um I think uh we're asking sort of modest tweaks in a few of the binding elements, but. Nothing very major and hope that they will be acceptable, uh but generally supportive of the of the project. They've made a good headline. Is there anything else anyone wishes to add? Is there anything else, Todd, that we need to go over regarding Corso?
No, there's not, thank you.
Um turning to the farm women's market projects, uh there are several items to bring up. Uh first, we've got the charette process, which will be taking place next week. Uh on the fifteenth here in the social hall of the Lawton Center and on the sixteenth in B C C. Um you know, we made it, we've come out with some town priors, we've got, we've put on the front page of the forecast for this month. Uh we're going to have at least another one, if not another two town priors. Uh because it's really important for the town to show strong uh presence here. Not just because we care about the amenities of the park, but to demonstrate how much we care about the parks themselves. So uh it is important, we have a good, really good turnout. Um uh Todd and Irene and I were on a call today with our partners, um the developers, the county and the Parks Department. And they're they're very excited about developers and the Parks Department about the charette and looking forward to active participation in it. Um they, the uh for everyone to realize, after those two meetings. There will then be a thirty-day period for further comments. And that's when we may seek to have organized town response and put that in, so that's something we can need to talk about after we've had the charets. Uh and the long-range planning committee is interested in working to help gather that information. Uh and then uh by mid-May, uh the developers and the Parks Department wish to come back. And give a presentation on how they have taken account of all the public comments and reshaped or modified the conceptual plan. So we'll see everything again in mid-May, uh and then after that. Uh certainly their hope is that that will basically be accepted, but there will still be more opportunities after that for further comments as. They gather as they work toward the site review. And ultimately, all these plans for the parks will be in the site review, which will be in front of the planning board and to which we will be able to speak. Uh as a testimony for the public hearing. Anyway, so that's uh what's going on there, but there are a couple of other things to talk about in regard to that. Uh and first of all. Uh Todd, let me turn it over to you to talk about the uh clarity, which is good news. That we can use the state money without restriction, but let me turn it over to you to have a few few comments.
Sure, thanks Barney. Uh we have uh in to be brief, we have received. From Matt Klein through Delegate Solomon's office, Matt Klein is the attorney for the House of Delegates. And Delegate Solomon's office has been assisting us greatly in an effort to further understand what. Regulations requirements we need to meet in order to get the state grant monies, we have been able to. Definitively determined from Matt Klein um that we do not have to meet the state procurement requirements for use of the state grant. Uh there was one outstanding issue about prevailing wage laws, but because the project is not twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent state funded. We don't need to meet that requirement either, so none of the procurement laws that the state imposes. Will we have to meet in order to receive the grant monies, there may be. A requirement and is a requirement to uh to meet. Reporting of how the property changes hands at each stage, so that the Board of Public Works can approve. The transfer of that land's ownership, the title of that land. As it's transferred from the Bethesda Parking Lot District to the county, to the developer and then to the Parks Department. However, we're going to include some narrative in our application that explains how this is going to, how title is going to be transferred and hopefully that will address. Potentially address um in advance. Um any concerns they might have about who ultimately is going to. Receive title to that land and and that it is to be used for the purposes for which the grant is given. Um if we knew do need to report, do need to uh report out the transfer land, that's not insurmountable. But the good news is, we don't have to, neither the town nor the co-grantee. Which is the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Montgomery Parks. Will have to meet the more stringent state procurement requirements that we thought heretofore that we had to meet. Uh Barney, we can't hear you.
Yeah, we're okay. Now you can hear me?
Yep, can now.
Okay. Um yeah, Joel here is becoming a master of going back and forth, so he's.
Killing it, going it.
Doing a good, doing a good job.
Um the uh and the developers have have been very keen, well first of all, have have. As you, I think we've reported previously, had had realized um basically just how much the budget has had to expand. For undergrounding of the wires. Uh and as I think we reported in the last council meeting, this is for several reasons. Uh having to do with inflation, but also that Pepco wants to do the work themselves, so there's no. No competition, they'll just do their, use their crews, and they also have standards for undergrounding which are. Stricter actually than the developer had assumed, especially regarding on Wisconsin Avenue and how many wires have to be buried. And once the wires come out of the ground, they have to go to a new pole and they can't go to an existing poles or a bunch of additional things. Anyway, um they they, as you know, uh with your permission, we've advanced the idea with them that we may wish to. Delete a piece of the scope of the work of the wires on forty-sixth street and we now have a price that we could save eight hundred thousand dollars on that. However, what the developers have done is gone ahead and and uh put together a letter. Which they've executed and sent to our state delegation. Asking the delegation to pursue the opportunity. Of granting another three and a half million dollars or so from state money. Specifically targeted to pay for the cost overruns associated with undergrounding the wires. Uh and also for an additional million beyond that. Uh to underground the wires on forty-seventh street. So that the surface Capitol Crescent Trail uh can be built with more flexibility and be a safer project. And uh to uh. Uh to read, to 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 as a springboard from from uh. Uh Evan Glass's comment earlier tonight, we all know that the question of whether or not there's ever going to be a tunnel is problematic. Given its cost and given the opposition from the county executive, so I think it makes it clear to all of us that. The safety and the quality of the surface Capitol Crescent Trail is very important. It's very likely to be the only trail they're going to have for at least a decade. So anyway, uh this request also subsumes a million dollar ask of that. Um I then received a call from from the lobbyists that uh the developers are using, uh Steve Silverman. Um asking if we would support. I'm sorry?
Steve Silverman.
Steve Silverman, yeah. Um asking if we would support uh the request from the developers. Uh and specifically, would we speak to Jared Solomon and to Mark Corman? Okay, so I wanted to bring this to awareness of all of you and ask for your. Permission, if you will, uh to to join in that effort. Uh I've I've I have no idea how successful it'll be, but it's apparent that if we can get more money from the state, great. So I don't know if it's more complicated than that at the moment. But I will observe that if we are successful in getting more money, there is then a second issue, which is how that money gets allocated. Between. Uh relief, if you will, in the budget, in the portion of the project that we are a part of, which is dealing with the parks and the undergrounding of the garage. That's the twenty-seven point seven million that we're a part of. Distinct from the redevelopment of the Farm Women's Market Plaza, which is a twelve million dollar project that is solely the responsibility of the developer. So how that money would be allocated between these two different buckets will be an important issue to take up. But we don't even get to that issue unless there's some more money from the state to begin with. So with your permission, I'd like to engage and have those conversations if that's.
Yeah, sure.
First of all, great, I think that's great. Um I think timing wise, it has to move pretty quickly.
Yes.
Because they're coming up on on um on on uh. Decision time, I forget the 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 term referred over in Annapolis, but it it's it's.
It's soon.
It's moving.
Yep.
And they're on the right committees, these Jared is, I think, an appropriator and Mark is.
The market.
House Majority Leader, so.
And and Craig Zoker on the Senate side is is.
Craig's good, and then we'll, I'm sure have Jeff Waldstraker's support if we need as well, so yeah, I think. Move it now, the wind, the winds at our sails.
We'll see what.
And especially if the governor's office is gonna have a liberal outlook on budget issues as opposed to conservative one. This is, you know, this should fit.
That'd be good, alright, good. Okay, I think that's it for the Farm Women's Market. Uh Todd, is there anything else that you can think of?
Nothing else, thanks.
Wait, would that affect the ratios related to the state money that we got to pass on?
That's a very good question, but it would be a truly high-grade problem if it got to twenty-five percent.
Yeah. That would be a high-grade problem, yeah, I don't think we'd get there, but I I doubt we'd even get there with that additional funding.
We will, we'll be mindful of that requirement.
Ten billion, right, right, yes.
We're mindful of it. The um. Okay, uh so then moving on to uh Zimmerman Park. Uh redevelopment and Coke Run, there are some developments there that have just have been. Turned up literally in the last day or two, and Todd, let me turn it over to you to bring everybody up to date on the news.
Sure, and Dave is there to to back me up here, um he has been the main main project.
Dave, give the presentation, do you want?
Dave, yeah, why don't you go ahead and Dave and give that to to let them know what's going on and what we've learned today and what some options are for proceeding with with. The 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 plan.
So we heard back from Jason Ezer yesterday. Um I think the last council meeting, I said that we had, or they had sent the plans to S H A for review and also to W S S C for review. Um we have not heard back from State Highway yet, uh but I guess Jason heard back yesterday from W S S C. Um and they identified some issues with our plan, um and so we're sort of trying to figure out how to navigate. Proceeding to address those concerns, um I guess there are two main issues. Um I guess as everybody knows, there are sewer lines and water lines that run through the park. Um the easier one to solve, um although maybe not the fastest, um is that those. Existing lines do not have easements for W S S C. Um and so as part of the air condition of their approval of the project. Uh they would like to make sure that those easements, which are prescriptive and probably exist, even if they're not legally recorded. Um they want to make sure that those easements are formally created. Um and so in order to do that, I think the town needs to basically. Have some more additional surveying work done that actually lays out the bounds of the easements. Um the dimensions of those easements um are sort of driven by W S S C's design standards. Um where there are certain widths that they'll require based on the size and the depth of the pipe to make sure that if those pipes need to be replaced. That they have adequate room to. Make those improvements and you know, there will be an understanding of any improvements that the town puts on top of those. Would either have to be replaced by the town power network or replaced by W S S C. Um and so they have sort of legal agreements that are legal language and requirements that they put on those easements. Um so it's really a matter of creating the map and the description of them and sending them to W S S C for their legal department to review. Which takes time to get all that put together and W S S C isn't necessarily quick to. Turn those around. The, I guess. More significant issue um is that there is a concrete twenty-four inch sanitary sewer line. Um that runs sort of in the area of the new pathway. Um it's a concrete pipe, I'm not sure if it's been lined. Um. Um but it basically runs sort of in the area of the proposed walkway um near the Sustainable Garden. Oh, can you share the screen, Todd?
Dave, can you, can you ask, can you ask Joel to unmute his mic? Yeah, can you hear me? Alright, what's going on? Dave?
Can you all hear me? This is Rich. Can you unmute, which, what do you want, Todd?
No, unmute Joel's mic.
Unmute Joel's mic.
Go for it.
That's it.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
What do you want me to show, Dave?
If you could share the plan that Jason sent over showing those utility lines.
Yeah, let me bring that up. The plan that you, Jason sent or that you sent to me, Dave? Hey, boy here.
Dave, the plan that you sent or the one that Jason sent?
So what? So the issue with this line is that W S S C is to. Say that the line should be buried under three feet of fill. And right now, they're, part of the line, actually, the top of it, you can see on the ground is exposed. And in the area where we're proposing to put the sidewalk, uh there's about, it's about six inches under the ground. Um and so, under W S S C's standards, they. Won't allow by right any improvements unless that pipe is three feet below the ground. So it's a little bit funny because we didn't install the pipe, it was installed by W S S C. Not to their own standard, and now they're trying to use that to prevent. And so. Because of the existing trees, because of the Denison Garden, because of the storm drain inlet that's behind it. It's not possible to add three feet of fill on top of that pipe, which would be. The obvious solution in order to build this walkway, um so that doesn't work, um so we're looking at. Basically requesting a variance from W S S C to allow us to build. The walkway constantly slightly modified to make the variance request a little bit less. Um in order to have them give us permission to deviate from their development.
But but isn't there another wrinkle? Um can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Todd was mentioning to me that W S S C may want to replace this line.
Well, we never, yes, exactly, Joel.
We don't know when.
Yeah.
All of the infrastructure through that park um is, you know, is old, it dates. Some of it from the thirties, some of it from the sixties, um our experience with. Sanitary lines, um sewer lines, is that they typically hold up very well. And W S S C is loath to do wholesale replacements of them. Um so what they will do is they'll make. Spot repairs, um if there's, you know, a hole or a crack in the pipe, or they'll. Instead of replacing the pipe, will actually install a plastic mine inside it that extends the lifespan by thirty or forty years. Um so, you know, I don't think we should necessarily worry about them replacing the sanitary line. Um the water mains that run through there, um those are typically replaced. Um as part of more wholesale projects, um we've reached out to them and they don't have current plans to replace those water mains. But W S S C will never say that they're not on a schedule, and if they find that there's a problem with those pipes, they can come in tomorrow. And, you know, remove them and replace them.
Turn on my. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Um and to the council, I'm wondering, so um as you go towards Black Farm. The pathway is going to kind of jet out onto Maple, is there any reason we can't just run? All along Maple, the sidewalk instead, and just forget about doing this entirely?
Well, I think you asked in your comments.
Yeah.
I make sure. I think the part of the problem issue to me is that. That path is really meant to be an extension. In a natural environment, you know, and that you're coming out of Denison and you're gonna want to bring people closer to. The foliage on the side of the hill, uh and. Obviously, what you're saying makes sense, that's what we have to do, we have a path, but it would be a shame to defeat the purpose of the path to get it. I, my personal hope would be that if we have to go for a variance, which sounds like what we'd have to do. But the fact that we're talking about constructing a path. Where frankly, the weight is going to be de minimis. That there would be a way to solve it in that process, that they would reckon, I mean, obviously, probably saying three feet. Contemplating what happens if you have a road, maybe trucks, but if we're just having the best. Walk on this. Um I like to think that there'd be a reasonable solution that wouldn't require. A wholesale level change, I suspect that in regard to the issue of warning us that we might want to replace the pipe. That's simply a polite way of asking for indemnification, uh that if and when they decide that they're going to do the pipe. We're gonna be responsible for taking up the path, and frankly, taking up the flag's gonna pass isn't something that you're concerned. So I could think that. There's a way through this, but I, what I take on board is that this is gonna be months, this is not something that's gonna move. We're like, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I mean, Jason thought that if we submitted a variance application, they would probably get back to us with comments after about four weeks. We'd have to respond to those comments, resubmit, and then it would probably be another month before we got a final determination.
Well, we know, I know that you guys have only just heard of this. So I don't think we at the council should be definitive in anything we say tonight, because you may come up with some good thoughts and ideas yourself, and we're gonna give you the chance to. nurture that, uh but I think you should be available to, if you want to call a work session or to do some round robin. Uh Todd and, you know, to engage us as necessary. Right, we just want to make sure that you had a chance to inform the council of what's going on.
So I think we'll probably work with Jason, we'll probably just try to do some direct outreach to the planner of your W S S C, just so. Yes, we know without having to go through Jason, you know, what they're looking for and.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea, to put you guys directly in the loop and not rely on Jason.
And then, you know, I guess we rely on Jason's advice on how to sort of navigate through this and I see. What changes, if any, need to be made or, you know, we apply to variance and try to get that done as quickly as we can.
And then that the, if we have to do the um. The easements uh perfect and record those, can that be done on a parallel basis with the variance proceeding, so?
Yeah, I mean, we have a boundary, so it's probably just getting the base data from that boundary survey um. Reviewing W S S C standards for how wide those easements need to be, and then just getting the paperwork run up um. With those easements um, which are probably a little bit wider than Jason was assuming. Um Jason, when he was doing the planting plan and sort of the improvement plan. Um it's given a five-foot alley on each side of all of the pies. Um where we were installing trees and, you know, avoiding putting some of the improvements in that area. If those easements are wider, I think that'll have to be modified to accommodate those wider easements and so we'll have to.
Rethink that, okay.
Rethink, just shift some of the planting ground a little bit, there'll be plenty of room to install. All the trees we we want.
Uh actually, not, not all the trees, Dave, not all the trees, we have to get.
Anything else, Todd, that you want to add on?
I don't think they can hear me.
I don't think you can hear Todd.
Rich, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, Todd has something to say, so, but I don't think he.
My 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 audio is not going through.
We can hear you, Todd.
You can hear me now.
Yeah.
Okay, the planning plan that Jason proposed will not be the same as what you've seen, we can't do any tree. Uh trees along uh along. Maple. We can't do, we have to modify the the um holly transplants. So i- it will be. Pretty significantly different than what you've seen, other than the ground cover and bushes that won't really be impactful, but we'll have to.
Why, why would it come out, why would it affect the holly tree transplants?
Because there's gonna be a larger easement around that that line, that main, once we establish these easements with W S S C. They're gonna require us to relocate or move further out those hollies from where they are currently contemplated to be transplanted.
Dave, can you point this out to us on the map? Oh, so we'd have to move it. We have to make sure it's ten feet.
Yeah, we couldn't do the tree, the tree lined buffer between the roadway and the park as was contemplated.
Okay, so that, alright, that makes change. So. Okay. Anything else, Dave, on the plans? Okay, before we go, we leave here, but one other thing I'd like to ask my colleagues to consider, um the um. And I I mentioned this to individually, but I wanted to make sure it brought it up uh and collectively. Uh that I'd like to have us consider naming the path, which I will be the optimist and assume that we will get this path built. Um uh after former Mayor Scott Fosser. Um and uh I think it's particularly apt that we consider this. Um not only because of his distinguished um. Records mayor and and previously town council member, but county council member for eight years. And particularly because of his environmental stewardship, uh he's really the father of the Ag Reserve. Uh the Seneca Watershed saving, he was head of the uh previously Audubon, now Nature Forward uh organization. Uh and so I think it's very fitting that adjacent to the Denison Garden would be naming the path for Scott and his good work. So uh I would like just to introduce that thought tonight, put it in the minutes, let the town uh see that, and but potentially take a vote next month. Uh if that's alright for people to consider.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, good, good. Okay, Coke and Run.
Dave, you can take that.
I don't have much to report here, um we've sent those plans to uh State Department of the Environment. Uh Jason and I met with them onsite about two weeks ago uh to take a look at the project. Um so they, I think, at the end of this week or the next week, are going to get some comments. Back to Jason, um some of those they gave us a heads up about and were ready to address. Um so we'll modify the plan based on their comments, uh resubmit it down for for approvals. Uh but there wasn't anything there that was surprising or that would prevent us from proceeding with that project, so. It seems like it's a, it's in the review process, um but it doesn't seem to be anything that's gonna keep us from. Proceeding.
Okay. Um Irene, do you want to stand up and say a bit about the the issue of the water running? Water in Coke and Run, and then turn it over to Todd to talk about his.
Sure, sure, so what Dave was referring to, just for everyone here, was a bank stabilization project. So there are points, the Elm Street, there's uh people's backyards. Um for a long time had had a stream running behind it, right, and then behind that's gonna be the the purple line. And then as it curves towards Lynn, um there's, there's a lot more water flow there. And um the project that Dave is referring to is stabilizing, um it's it's like people's. Front yards, backyards, depending on, you know, which property line we're talking about, so some ARPA funds. Um and and others are are being designated for that, what I'm talking about is that along um Elm Street Park. I'm sorry, along Elm Street, residents have noticed that the the stream is running. Low slash not running at all, and there's some questions around whether does this have something to do with the Purple Line construction? Is there something going on? Um in particular, there's a elevator shaft that is being built. That's going to effectively connect the red line, the metro with the purple line, um perhaps that. You know, that whole huge project is is what's um affecting. So there's a lot of conjecture as to on the part of residents as to what might be contributing to this. Um particular issue, um this is a protected area that eventually runs. Um there's a Coke and Run to the east of us, but eventually it runs into Rock Creek and, you know, everything else and obviously important. So a a couple of residents came to, uh you know, through a public services committee meeting. Came through and kind of asked about, because Purple Line runs under Public Services Committee. Uh is there something that the town can do, is there more information that we can provide, we we can find out and provide and understand? So after um learning more about residents' concerns, and I actually had a meeting with a couple of residents earlier this week. To get an understanding of what the exact concern might be, um what we're going to do, uh colleagues is. Uh we've already, actually, Todd has already, using the royal be here, uh Todd has already reached out. Um to the actual state regulatory body that would oversee from an environmental perspective this area. This particular organization originally approved the Purple Line plans um back. The previous set of partners, right, uh in terms of environmental impact, in terms of ensuring that that would be. Um diminished and and, you know, there would actually be better stormwater management than what previously was occurred. When it was just a a regular old walkway pathway, um and what now. Uh that the individuals want to look at, or what Todd has requested and they've agreed to, is to. Do a little bit of investigation um to see what if anything has changed, so focusing on Elm Street properties. Um specifically, uh you know, it it, yes, we haven't had that much precipitation, but it's not really a drought. So what else could be going on here, uh if anything, and are plans being followed per the rules that is as it is a protected area? So um it's in progress, it's with the process, but uh hopefully we'll be able to get some information back by the time we meet as a council next month.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add? You've actually been having the contact, thank you for doing that.
Absolutely, I think Rich wants to make a comment.
Yeah, um I I'll just add a little history to this, when when the uh.
Uh Rich, can you uh speak up?
I I can try, is that better? Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Let me ask them to unmute Joel's mic, uh Rich, there we go.
Am I unmuted now?
Go for it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, um well, the Purple Line Committee, when we first started the Purple Line reviews. Um actually looked into that, uh one of the, and luckily, there was a person that was uh the second house in. The prior owner had been there for, I don't know, fifty years or so, but there was a, there was a, that. Area back there was originally watered by a stream or a spring. That was where the Purple Line shaft is is being constructed. And prior to the the Purple Line shaft, they had, they had diverted that stream, they'd already diverted that stream. To a stormwater um pipe underneath Elm Street Park. So the those houses that, starting with Jim's house and then going down about four or five houses. Uh they put a berm up, and there has been no water in those first four or five houses. Uh for years, uh because that stream was diverted, so only water that came into that area. Was from the runoff of the trail, so um. When we, when we looked at the trail. Um, plans for the stormwater management along the trail. Um, there were no, there were not going to be any. Stormwater outlets coming from the trail. Down into that part of the town. So it was going to remain dry. Uh, that, that, all those houses. So that, uh, just to give you a little history about how that, why that's dry now and. Uh, it, it didn't used to be because there was a spring that fed it, but that spring's been diverted. And the only way for that, those areas behind those houses to get water is from the runoff down across the trail. And that's going to be stopped by the, the walls. Uh, of the, of the, of the uh, of the Purple Line. That's all I got.
Right. I, I, Rich is correct in that, in that. Observation that there was a de-watering of that area because of the shunting of water from. That, that point of interest, if you will, among, or behind the. Houses. It west uh, uh, on Elm Street and that would be shunted down to east on Elm Street. And so there was a de-watering effect there. We don't know if other things are ultimately contributing to that, that there's no water other than just simply, you know, groundwater or what the groundwater level may be, but. Rich's observations are accurate. We can't hear you. Sorry.
Good.
Unmute.
Think you're good. Now we have to, we're really getting this coordinated. I can, it's linked up. They uh, so you've been in touch with Maryland Department of Environment, right, MDE? Is that the? Todd, you've been in touch with them?
I have, absolutely. To Greg Hazard. Uh, he is, uh, we used to work with Mitch Manchester from MDE. They've been very responsive. They've come out, they've met with residents, they've explained the situation. Uh, Greg Hazard is, has reached out to um, an associate. He spoke with the Deputy Director of MDE today and they have agreed to uh, give this project to um, one of their divisions. Specifically, I think it's the uh. MDE Waterway and Water Source Appropriation Program. I sent him some of the concerns expressed by town residents. Um, about the de-watering, if you will, for lack of a better characterization of what's happening, the lack of water flow. Uh, and he has agreed to do the investigation or his. Agency has agreed to do the investigation and it might take some time. It's not one of their immediate priorities. They. They debt tend to prioritize issues with respect to wells running dry to provide clean drinking water for residents. Or for property owners, but he said that they'll get to it. He's already made some progress into determining who will do it and, but I don't have an indication yet of when it will be done.
Okay. Well, the reality is that, it's Rich. Oh, yes, you're doing is turn down that. Keep me, keep me on, okay? That, we know what the plans are and Rich, you described it exactly correctly, that the plans call for cutting off the water runoff of the right of way. For our first long stretch until you get down to what's identified as point of interest number four. And that's where it all then will spill into Coquen Run. So it's still necessary for, for us to support the, the bank because that's, that water will be in the stream by that point. Uh, but, but no water is going to be contributed from the right of way. But I think what my mind, and maybe Rich, you've, you've been helpful in answering this, I had thought that. We all knew that the, there wouldn't be the runoff from the right of way, but that's runoff when there are rainstorms. And I was thinking there was an underlying, you know, current, some sort of underground current that was bringing water anyway at some level into the Coquen Run. But I guess you're saying that actually that's been dried up.
Yeah, they, uh, are, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, no, um, there was, there's, there was no water that was coming in on the uh, houses towards Elm Street Park from any natural water source.
Okay.
It was all, it was all runoff. And to be honest, I, and when we did the initial surveys of the homes along Elm Street. One of their concerns was is that the, the, create the um. Purple Line would add to the water that was there. So now they're saying they want it, they want more water.
Got it, got it. Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, we'll hear back. Rod, you, Todd can keep us informed of when MDE will finally get around to looking at it. But in the meantime, we'll get back to the residents and let them know, or at least taking that step. And we're getting some response from them. So that's good. Um, and the other, where we leave this general topic. Wanted to mention that um, the state delegation was indeed very helpful in getting to the State Highway Administration. And just as uh, Jared Solomon's Chief of Staff told us. That, that did in fact force SHA to, uh, to schedule a meeting. So we now have a meeting for the fourteenth next week. Um, with uh, the people that whom we want to meet with, which is the head of the Office of Traffic Safety of SHA. And a guy named Cedric Ward, is that? Is that his name?
That's correct.
Uh, the meeting is in Baltimore. Uh, I will go up for it in person. Uh, but Irene and Todd will be participating by phone. But we also expect to have on it, I guess, some members of the delegation. But certainly also from Andrew Friedson's office and hopefully Michael Paylor, who's head of traffic safety uh, for the county, right? And all this, we have to clear, to discuss the improved, trying to get even further improvement in the signalization. Uh, across, crosswalk across East West Highway at Maple. So we'll see what happens, but at least we finally have a meeting, which otherwise we would not possibly have been able to get. So we're. We've been, we thanked Jared profusely for his help in getting this done. And the letter was signed by all three delegates and by Senator Wallstrang. Okay, uh, on to the anti-Semitism.
Change in the governor's office.
Right, yes.
Sorry.
Joel, over to you.
Yeah, no, thanks, thanks, Mayor Rush and, and everyone. I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief because I know it's been a long, productive. Evening and just um. To sort of uh, build on what we discussed earlier in the evening with President Glass. There is a, a, an opportunity to engage right now, local governments on countering antisemitism that is born out of the horrible moment we're living in, uh, in terms of the rise in. Um, antisemitic attacks and hate speech and hate attacks across the county. One, one stat I heard um, yesterday in conversation uh, with the American Jewish Committee was that ninety-one percent of the religious bias incidents uh, last calendar year in Montgomery County were against the Jewish community. So we've seen a real spike, uh, we've seen it in the schools and with the, the, the good offices of the, the town council here and the council members and everybody working through this. We're, we're, we're building a process that I think can frankly have some real practical impact. And that's what we're aiming for here. Um, as mentioned, uh, the county passed a definition of antisemitism last year. And in that definition. The idea was to work with municipalities and local communities, but nothing was prescribed as to what that would look like. So tonight, we're going to try to kick that off and uh, develop an antisemitism awareness, public education campaign. Uh, we have a, a background memo and resolution text and language that was circulating that the town has had the opportunity to see that we will then, if passed tonight, we will then take this and uh, share it with the other municipalities in the county. There are twenty-two of us. Uh, so minus us, twenty-one others and seek their comment uh, with the goal being included in this resolution and action plans to develop public education. Um, events and um, will give us some time to see what kind of feedback we get from other municipalities. And the mayor Rush yesterday sort of previewed this through the Maryland Municipal League, Montgomery County Chapter, several mayors. So give them time to provide language edits to a resolution, suggestions about the operations. Hopefully we can get feedback and buy-in from everyone so that when this kicks off, there will be uh, uh, a real public thorough, integrated effort amongst the local governments to engage the communities about what's going on and about. And there are five topics we, we brainstormed, but we, we're obviously going to be open to more. But talking about the status of antisemitic hate crimes in the area, how to talk about it, how to deal within the community, the roots of historic antisemitism, broader trends of hate, these kinds of topics. And um, uh, you know, ideally we'll partner with the organizations and experts and have them engage and help us to get a better grip on what's happening in the community right now as uh, we saw with, uh, with Evan. Uh, it's, and frankly, at the national level too, it's being grappled with quite extensively. So this is a first step, uh, on the practical level, not a first step here in the town, but a first step to try to um, take advantage of the the dynamic local municipal infrastructure that we have in the county and get it in the fight. So I'll pause there.
We had a very good work session on it. Do you want to make a resolution for us to adopt this draft resolution and, and ask that we?
I'll make a resolution to adopt the reservation.
The remaining, yes, the second part of it to, to uh, put before, put in front of the other municipalities and ask for their comments and to join us on this effort. And our president, bye.
Yes, and, and also I should say thanks in advance to Todd, uh, who will help with coordinating with the other uh, municipalities and obviously we'll, we'll be working hand in glove, but uh, this is work. So thank you uh, to Todd and, and the, the county, the, the town staff. So I'd like to introduce the resolution to have this resolution be adopted tonight by the town council to then uh, be circulated to town residents and the other municipalities for feedback and input. Over the next. Next month period and then to reconvene and, and assess where we are in, in one month's time. Next town council meeting will be April nineteenth. So yeah, between now and then to, to assess it.
Any comment? Okay, all, is there a second?
Second.
Second from my, okay, all in favor?
All right.
Get it out there and let's see. I, I, I wouldn't be at all surprised if it takes longer than a month, just because other municipalities will take time and need time. But the point is that we will be encouraging them to consider it promptly. Uh, and I think we've worked carefully in the wording.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
We had, we had today, we had our call, our monthly call with uh, Councilmember Friedson. Uh, and several mayors in his district on it, so I brought the topic up.
Today, yeah.
Yeah, and as I, and, and he was, so that I've had two conversations and he was very, very encouraged. He was very pleased that we were doing this. Good cares very much. And obviously we heard about it from Councilmember Glass tonight also. So, and I, and, and, and I think one of the things that the county council members have appreciated is our statement that we're, the springboard for this is their resolution and their request that they, that there be work with the municipality. So we're, you know, there was, it's a real common effort is what we're demonstrating here. So that's good. Okay, thank you. Um, then the last item on the agenda is uh, discussion of traffic flow on Forty-Sixth Street. Um, and um, Irene, let me start it with you, but then turn it over to Todd, um, for how.
Barney? Hopefully, can, can you all hear me? Rich?
Yeah, I can hear you, but Todd wanted to say something. Yes.
Todd. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Joel didn't mention that the next council meeting will be April nineteenth. That's not the normal date we're scheduling. Um, but we've discussed some issues with um, Jewish holidays that it interferes with. So if you could all let me know if April nineteenth works for your calendars, that would be helpful. Joel, can you unmute your mic and I'll mute Irene?
Okay.
Yes, twelve plus seven is nineteen. Good point. Thank you.
Uh, the, there uh, was a resident who.
We've lost you, Irene.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll start again. Uh, there uh, was a resident who, who uh, um, wrote into the town office asking if uh, the Public Services Committee could take a look at the do not enter sign that currently actually has existed for decades. But um, when you're working your way towards the town on Leland, um, where right now you would have to take, you have to continue onto Leland versus um, taking a right onto forty-six because you're unable to, because there's a do not enter sign there. Uh, it, it abuts a, um, what is now Lot Ten that we keep talking about, that will be eventually converted to a um, park once uh, all this stuff is making its way through. Anyway, when the Public Services Committee, uh, and Howard here is the chair of that committee. When we took a look at it, it was in context of a lot of other different questions that had come in about um, entry restrictions and uh, different parts of town during rush hour timeframe and, and all of that. And as you know, a few years ago, the um, the committee uh, undertook a very extensive traffic study. And uh, you know, kind of working through the recommendations of that study and felt that with this specific request, it wasn't as easy as just saying, let's lift up and have a do not enter restriction. It's kind of, it's a delicate balance. And um, as we think about uh, uh, all these different complicating factors, it's not just, you know, removing a sign. So at the time, the Public Services Committee felt that, you know, uncomfortable in doing piecemeal uh, type of, of recommendation to the council. However, um, if there, if the council feels that given the impending, you know, over the next few years, there will be a installation of a park, um, the, the parking lot will be converted into a park. Um, that that in, in and of itself kind of is an extenuating circumstance that um, maybe a traffic engineer can take a look at this specific um, segment, street segment to do a feasibility analysis on it and come up with some recommendations and all that. Then definitely the PSC can, you know, in speaking with the mayor, figure out and then come up with some recommendations. So I think that that's a, you know, appropriate.
Any comments?
Yeah, uh, just one quick comment. I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that. I know it's extra work. Um, not an easy thing. And if you can find out how that became a one-way block, please let me know. It, it's, it's baffling to me. It's so interesting. Forty-sixth Street is two-way. Um, for its whole length, except for the one block and um.
And then on the other side for Elm Street Park, it's, it's also a one-way.
It is.
Yeah.
But that's like highly used area, but it is one-way nonetheless.
It's one-way and it's a budding Elm Street Park. Uh, and, and uh, yeah, this has been in existence since before the town became a town. Because as you remember, there are different segments of the town that existed before it consolidated and became one town.
That was nineteen seventy-nine, I think.
Something like that. So, so a map that I saw, that was published around nineteen eighty, already had a do not enter one-way on.
So this was not one of the special requests from a neighbor?
No, well, it might have been at some point, you know, but, but it, even back then, there was, there was some, something done that people needed determination. So it'd be interesting to understand what.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the only additional thought on this is, is ultimately if the committee supports it and if it goes forward, it'll definitely um, reduce cut-through traffic through Lot Ten and then ultimately enable Walsh residents to have uh, access to getting in when Lot Ten becomes a park. So it's, it's, it's um. You know, it's a, it's a little piece. I, I hope we can, I hope the committee supports it. Want to see what they say, of course, most people say, but I definitely. Um, would love to be able to drive down that street to get home rather than have to go through the lots or over, over the grass when that comes later.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see what the feasibility asks.
Is that, is that any other comments? Is that an acceptable, please?
That's great.
So I guess I want to ask what the committee um, would actually be looking at. So as it isn't just, I realize it's not just a matter of, you know, taking away the do not enter because, so would you be looking at them, what would the impact be on the surrounding?
because, so would you be looking at then, what would the impact be on the surrounding streets? And also the fact that there is no sidewalk on that piece there.
There's no sidewalk. There's parking allowed on one side of the, of that street. I don't know, and again, I'm not an expert, but the training, the, the traffic engineer would look like things that turning radius that onto Walsh, knowing that that is two-way, if you will, into, in, in a certain, certain segment as it works its way towards west. So it's a very, there's a lot going on there. And you're exactly right. Hopefully the feasibility study will come back with those types of, you know, we've taken a look at all of these different factors. And then we'll, yeah.
And then also a larger question would be, once we have those parks there, there's going to be a lot more traffic around that area because we have hundreds of new residents and presumably a new and improved front market. So much more traffic there maybe weekly rather than just, you know, on Saturdays and Wednesdays.
Sure.
So maybe we are going to have to re-look at that entire traffic pattern right there at that end of the town because it's not just that little strip, but, you know, traffic around there because you're not going to be able to cut through Lot Twenty-Forty, even people cut through Lot Twenty-Four as well.
That's right.
Although the Forty-S sixth Street runs parallel to Lot Twenty-Four and it's two-way currently. So you do, you can cut through that. To, to get to Walsh, you must cut through Lot Ten as opposed, that's the one. There's must versus can.
Or you can take a left off of Bradley and make your way back through west and over to right.
Yeah, and then you go around the block because it's a one-way.
If I can, that's a good.
It's just, it's a little island. You want to see.
I want to speak. One, one that I have about this is that as we think through these adjustments, I've come to feel grave skepticism about any projections. You know, we just don't know what happens until we actually do something. And I think that's, your point's exactly right, Joy, that thinking ahead to the traffic that's going to be generated by these parks, who knows? I mean, we just don't. And so one way that we might think about this, looking ahead when we wish to make any adjustments, is to do it on an interim basis. Do it for a year. Try it out. You know, we don't have to make a commitment forever when something's changed. We can try it out, see what happens. And if some further adjustments are required, look at it again. After, we're only changing signs here. We're not, you know, we're not ripping up major blocks of asphalt. So I, I feel that there should be a feeling of, let's do what we think is sensible on a graduated basis, but also feel that we can continue to monitor and study it and make further changes or change things again if we feel that's what we have to do once we actually see how cars behave. It's very hard to predict. Just to fill us off.
I think it should be made to, to way from an interim basis. And it would take some of the traffic away, I think, from either sharp curve from these streets.
Okay, so we'll proceed on that basis. Todd, this doesn't need a resolution. You'll just go ask Joe to get engaged, right?
Joe's already been engaged. He'll probably have a report back by the end, maybe by tomorrow.
Well, so we'll be able to take it, get it to the committee soon. Yep.
Understanding, understanding though, that this, this review will not, will not address potential cut-through traffic flows, that it only will address engineering feasibility.
Understood. Okay, any other issues for tonight? All right, then I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your participation. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
We've finished five minutes.